Ready? Okay. Let's go ahead then and call the Johnston City Council Meeting, number 25-007 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coe?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council, and that will be coming up here shortly. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I saw George Ikorn in the audience this evening. So, George, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I have no changes this evening.
Okay. Counsel, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, we have several scheduled public communications this evening. The first is a check presentation from Polk County Board of Supervisors for Kites on the Green Festival, which is scheduled for May 3, 2025.
This is one-way.
Big check. That's right. We like those kind of entrances.
Hello. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Jill Alterner. For those of you who are not aware, I am the new supervisor representing District 2, and that's everywhere from Urbandale up around over to Mitchellville. We have been there for almost 100 days, so I was going to give you a quick recap, but based on the time, I think I'll just leave it at, "We're doing great things. Please invite me back, and I look forward to talking with you more later."
I'll have you back.
All right, because I do have to make time for a picture for this. So, one of the fun and exciting things I get to do as supervisor is come and do check presentations, and you have a very communicative administrator and mayor who had me in here right before Christmas, wearing Santa hat and all, to talk about projects going on. We met the second week of January to talk about Kites on the Green, and I think we've even met since then about other projects. So, I appreciate all the information that you guys are always willing to provide. Kites on the Green sound like a great activity, has wonderful attendance. In fact, I looked at the partnership attendance and seen how you guys have continued to increase that. I look forward to being a part, hopefully myself, and I've been guaranteed by Carrie that you will have good weather. So, with that, I would like to present you guys with a check, and if we could do a quick picture, my media team would be very upset if I didn't get that.
Wonderful.
All right, we have $3,000 that with our partnership with Polk County and Prairie Meadows that we are donating to you guys or sponsoring Kites on the Green.
Well, Super Alterner, we will come down and join you in just a sec, but I just want to say thank you. You know, we, how many years have we had Kites on the Green, Janet?
Twelve.
Twelve? We've had Kites on the Green 12 years now. Every year, it just keeps getting bigger and better, to the credit of the staff and all the volunteers that participated in putting it together. But we could not do it without, you know, the partners that we have that contribute funding in order to do the things that we do at Kites on the Green. All of the funding that goes to Kites on the Green is donations, and so we, you know, the Polk County Supervisors have long been a partner in funding the event, and here we are again, and we appreciate you rolling this to step forward and continue that partnership that we have. It is an amazing event. We will have good weather, but we learned from last year that even when we don't have good weather, we still have thousands of people turn out, so...
I learned that at your parade as well.
That's right. That's right. So, with that, we will come down and take a picture and accept the check.
Why do you want to have a big check and so much more impressive than the small ones that I have?
We do want that smaller one. Yeah, just the I O U. Some of us in the class will.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we will do that.
Okay, the next item under Public Communications is recognition of Mary Jane Paez for receiving the 2025 Claude Aaron's Community Service Award.
A couple of weeks ago, we had our Iowa Park Rec Conference over in Corvooville, Iowa, and we have an awards banquet, and one of our awards that we offer to people is a volunteerism award. It's called the Claude Aaron's Community Service Award, and we nominated Mary Jane for that award, and she was selected to win. And so, I just want to read a little bit what I talked about at the conference. Mary Jane is a longtime resident of Johnston and passionate advocate for our parks. Mayor Paula Diernfield says she has witnessed firsthand her dedication, innovative thinking, and impactful work that consistently exceeds expectations. She was instrumental in establishing Johnston as a Tree City USA, collaborated with the council to create our first park, Dewey Park, and is actively involved in the Historical Society documenting Johnston's history for future generations. She is also active in other civic groups like the Johnson's Lions Club, which has benefited the community with the installation of a lion sculpture and the financial investment in a new shelter at the Johnston Common Park. The city of Johnston was incorporated, as you know, in 1969. The first park was dedicated in 1979, and Mary Jane was instrumental in making this happen. She served on the park board in the early 80s, city council in 1992, and last helped with the ribbon cutting of the new playground there at Dewey Park that was installed, bringing it into the 20th century. Her leadership and dedication have led to the success of the city of Johnston Parks, tree program, and quality of life for its residents, which is why she was selected as the outstanding and dedicated, unselfish spirit of volunteerism to the city of Johnston.
Thank you so much.
Today tonight is my husband, Alex, and also my daughter from north of Albany, New York.
Oh, wow.
And also my granddaughter from Scarborough, Maine, and she has the same job as Janet has in Scarborough as Director of Communications. I have a few comments.
Sure.
I'm honored to have been selected as the Iowa Park and Recreation Association 2025 Claude Aaron's Community Service Award winner. I read about Claude Aaron's. What an inspiration. He started out with creating a seed corn company. He went on to create a company dedicated to playground equipment. As a charter member of the Johnston Historical Society, I would like to tell some of the history related to parks in Johnston. Did you know that in the 50s and 60s, the Johnston Lions Club created a park adjacent to their first clubhouse? It had a playground equipment, picnic tables, a charcoal grill, and the members even made a skating rink each winter. Ben Dewey, who was a charter member of the Lions Club, probably had a hand in that. The development of green meadows in Johnston in 1977 was a turning point in the history of Johnston. Green meadows was the first master planned community in the state. Trails and green belts were included in the planning. Our first city park, Dewey Park, was dedicated in 1979. I was asked to be a member of the Parks and Recreation Board in 1981. Plans were finalized and bulldozers were activated. I have been, I have told many, I have told my story about planting trees in the beginning of this beloved park. When I was starting on the city council, a major event happened relating to parks. The city required that land developers must set aside a percentage of land that would be reserved as parkland. That is why we have so many, a good number of parks. During that time, I volunteered to represent Johnston in the Metro Trail Planning Committee. All the other communities have staff members representing their towns. In 2002, the Simpson barn was brought to Johnston Commons Park. The completed barn was turned over to the city in 2006 as a gift to the community by the Johnston Historical Society. About six years ago, the Lions Club was preparing to celebrate 75 years as a club serving the community. The club wanted something lasting that would be part of their legacy. Working with the city, it was decided that the club would contribute $50,000 to be used to enhance the new park and shelter in Johnston Commons. That's a lot of pancakes. In the early years of this community, parks and trails had a lower priority than utilities and roads. As we have matured, our town has excelled in providing these amenities. I'm proud to have played a part in the development of parks and trails in Johnston. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Mary Jane, and we need to take a picture, but before we do, I just want to say, say a special thank you for everything that you do in our community. I mean, Jeff did a nice job of kind of highlighting some of the things that you have contributed to our community over time, and it's been absolutely amazing. I mean, just, just the story that you just shared with us about the history of parks in our community. I mean, we wouldn't know all of that if it weren't for you.
That's why I put it in. History is so important, and we need to make people aware.
Absolutely. So, you've, you've been an incredible member of this community for many, many years, and we're so much better for it. So, so again, thank you for everything that you do. You know, I was really pleased when I heard that the, the park staff was going to nominate you for this special recognition, and, and we couldn't be happier that, that you, you were recognized and you received the award. So, with that, we're going to come down and have a picture taken with you. Want to invite your family up? Thanks for being here. Behind every good woman is a good man. I praise him. So, the next item under Public Communications is a check presentation from MidAmerican Energy for the Trees Please Program, and it's my understanding that the individual that was here, Kelly, who was going to make the presentation of the check, had to leave. We're running a little bit behind here this evening, but we want to thank MidAmerican. They, they come through every year and, and make a nice contribution for planting of trees in our community, so we will make sure that, that Kelly and others at MidAmerican Energy know that, that we appreciate that. The next item is Proclamation for National Arbor Day, which is Friday, April 25, 2025. Do we have anybody here to receive the proclamation? Janet, do you know?
On behalf of the Tree Board, I will.
Okay. So, I will then, do you want, do you want to read the proclamation?
I don't.
No, I, I really don't.
Well, I'll, I'll read it then.
This is a proclamation by the Johnston City Council, National Arbor Day, Friday, April 25, 2025. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. Trees also provide nectar for bees. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Paula Diernfield, mayor of the city of Johnston, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Johnston, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to bring joy to the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And with that, I will go ahead and sign this proclamation. Mayor, it turns out we have another Tree Board member. Okay. Nicole, would you like to come up and, and the two of us could get a picture with the mayor as representatives of the Tree Board?
That would be great.
And, and Carrie also? She's, Carrie, yes, you. Come on up. I know we're late, but...
Good job.
Good job. All of us. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
And we have one more proclamation, and that is for National Library Week in Johnston, April 6 through the 12, 2025. And I know that, there we go. Okay, well, why don't, why don't we, why don't we read the proclamation and we'll take a quick picture? Do we have any other Library Board members here?
Yes, we have Library Board members and Library Foundation members.
Oh, okay, okay.
We've got a big group here.
Okay. Well, I will read the proclamation, and then we'll invite them up and have a picture taken with them as well. So, this is again a proclamation by the Johnston City Council, National Library Week, 2025. Whereas, libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas, libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement and critical thinking. And whereas, libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas, libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services and strengthen the entire community. And whereas, libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and learners by providing training, resources, and opportunities that support career growth, creativity, and economic success. And whereas, libraries nurture young minds through storytimes, STEAM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas, libraries uphold the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas, dedicated librarians and library workers create welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. And whereas, the Johnson Public Library is committed to promoting discovery, inspiring creativity, and engaging the community through exceptional resources, programs, and services. And whereas, libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme "Drawn to the Library." Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Paula Diernfield, proclaim April 6 through the 12, 2025, as National Library Week. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. And I can tell you that, that is so true. I was just at the library yesterday. It was 4:00 in the afternoon on a Sunday, and that, that place was buzzing. The parking lot was full, and there was all kinds of activity going on in the, in the library. And again, a lot of that credit goes to the wonderful staff that we have there, our library director, all of this, all of the employees that we have there, as well as the volunteers, that make that just a really special place for our residents and others in our community to, to visit. So, with that, I'll invite up the, the Library Board members and staff that are here.
Can we join Mayor as well?
Absolutely. Congratulations, Janet.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, I think we got most of the fun stuff out of the way. We are still under Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearings. We have several public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing and first consideration of ordinance number 1137 and ordinance number 1138, amending Chapter 155, Johnson Building Code, and Chapter 159, the Johnson Fire Code. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:55.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'll keep this brief and save any time I can for questions. What we identified in the fire code is two provisions that were more restrictive than was intended. The first is the sprinkler thresholds, which affected all commercial buildings. Council had previously set a moratorium on this until we had time to review it, bring it back for adoption. So, we're going to try and clean that up tonight. The other being amendments to the fire hydrant requirements. This is the one that dictates the number of fire hydrants that are required on-site. These are not the ones that are required along the public right-of-way, only the ones that are on the private property. As we reviewed this, and we reached out to the local community to make sure that we're standing in line with our neighbors, as far as the fire hydrants one goes, we are by far the most restrictive. In fact, most of them were kind of shocked at what we had on the books for that. So, this would be going back to the base code as well as adopting Appendix B and Appendix C, which further helps us detail the number of fire hydrants required on-site. With all that in mind, we then took this to the fire board to propose it to them as well. I apologize, I did not get their recommendation to you, but they did recommend approval, and I can absolutely provide that for you if you'd like. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:57. Do we have a motion to approve first consideration of ordinance number 1137?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 25-90, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Merle Hay Road, or Merle Hay Water Trail Access Project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:55.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'll keep this brief and save any time I can for questions. What we identified in the fire code is two provisions that were more restrictive than was intended. The first is the sprinkler thresholds, which affected all commercial buildings. Council had previously set a moratorium on this until we had time to review it, bring it back for adoption. So, we're going to try and clean that up tonight. The other being amendments to the fire hydrant requirements. This is the one that dictates the number of fire hydrants that are required on-site. These are not the ones that are required along the public right-of-way, only the ones that are on the private property. As we reviewed this, and we reached out to the local community to make sure that we're standing in line with our neighbors, as far as the fire hydrants one goes, we are by far the most restrictive. In fact, most of them were kind of shocked at what we had on the books for that. So, this would be going back to the base code as well as adopting Appendix B and Appendix C, which further helps us detail the number of fire hydrants required on-site. With all that in mind, we then took this to the fire board to propose it to them as well. I apologize, I did not get their recommendation to you, but they did recommend approval, and I can absolutely provide that for you if you'd like. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:57. Do we have a motion to approve first consideration of ordinance number 1137?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 4B, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 25-90, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Merle Hay Road, or Merle Hay Water Trail Access Project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:58.
Mayor and council, we have in our capital improvement budget a, plans to create a water access point next to Merle Hay. It'll be our third one in the area, be a great ending point if you want to start up on 70th, or maybe if you want to venture down to the Moone River, you could start there and depend how much time you have. But we had in our budget, we opened up bids last week, and we had three bids submitted. One was unresponsive. Their unit air prices were wrong, so they were unresponsive. Engineers' estimates were $983,825. The low bidder was Concrete Connections, a local Johnston business here in town, at $815,395.50, and so, we would recommend going with them to complete our Merle Hay Water Access Trail project.
Counsel, have any questions for Jeff?
This doesn't, this really is sort of the connection from the street, but no, the parking, is the parking all kind of as part of the bombers project? Is that right?
This will have some limited parking and a turnaround spot, like to drop off your canoe to go down the ramp to get in, knowing that there's going to be future extra parking when bombers gets done.
Okay.
Yep.
Jeff, tell me the timeframe for when we expect this work to be completed.
I believe substantial completion is October? Yeah. October.
Okay, so it should be done yet this fall. Fantastic. Other questions for Jeff? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:59. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-90?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4C, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 25-101, determining an area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area. All the words are running together. And that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting Amendment Number 15 to the Johnson East Central Tiff Urban Renewal Plan. And we'll open this public hearing at 8:00. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Council, we have an obligation in our urban renewal plans. If we're aware of specific projects we're looking to take on, that we clarify those projects in our urban renewal plan. So, this amendment, that characterizes this amendment. One of the projects is already in our plan, but the scope of work... One of the projects is already in our plan, but the scope of work has been clarified, and the budget for the project is slightly increasing. So that's the Northwest 62nd Avenue improvements from Northwest 54th Court to Northwest Beaver Drive. If you don't mind, I'll read some of the details, but this would in general allow the amount of increment to be utilized for this project to increase from $9 million to $11 million. The amendment would allow for expenses including pavement removal, excavation and grading, street reconstruction, widening, streetscaping, storm sewer collection system improvements, sanitary sewer collection system improvements, water distribution system improvements, sidewalk sidewalks, trails, traffic monitoring and signalization, city fiber optic system improvements, installation of streetlights, erosion control, wetland mitigation, pavement markings, traffic control, traffic control, surface restoration, and miscellaneous related expenses to the project, again on Merle Hay between or on Northwest 62nd between 54th and Northwest Beaver. So that's a project already in the plan, it's just updating the scope and the details and the budget. A new project identified in this amendment is the Merle Hay overlay project from Northwest 55th to Northwest 61st. This would allow for a three inch asphalt overlay on Merle Hay, including access management and turn lane, turn lane improvements, and installation of another trail. And this would allow for up to $5 million of increment to be used from the East Central District. There is an additional project that wasn't called out in the summary, I apologize, but it is in the plan, and that is a strategic priority of the council for redevelopment plan in the Merle Hay area, and that would allow for up to $200,000. We did hold a public consultation for the Polk County and for the school district. There was no one present for those consultations, and no public comments have been received. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Josh? Seeing none. This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none. We will close the public hearing at 8:03. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-101?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Josh, I just want to confirm, adoption of amendment number 15, that was part of the resolution, correct? We don't have to take separate action on it?
Yeah, I believe it's all one.
Yeah, it looked looked like it was, but I just wanted to confirm. Great. Moving on to item 4D, conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Northwest Saylorville Drive New Water Main Project Segment B and C, and consider resolution number 25-93, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost, consider the construction bids, and consider resolution number 25-94, making award of construction contract, and resolution number 25-95, approving construction contract and bond. And we'll open this public hearing at 8:05.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. On March 26th, the city received bids for the Northwest Saylorville Drive Water Main Projects Segments B and C, as shown here on the map. You can see that segment C will run from our north city limits up Beaver Drive to Saylorville Drive, and then it'll turn and head west on Saylorville Drive. And then segment C kind of picks up along Saylorville Drive, and then turns south and runs along 110th Court, and then crosses underneath Beaver Creek and through Camp Dodge until it terminates on Towner Drive. We did receive three bids for the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $9,029,107.25. The low bid received was $6,704,779. Certified bid tab shows on track construction was the low bidder, which is approximately about 25% underneath the engineer's estimate. We have worked with on track before, they are currently wrapping up segment C of the Little Beaver Creek sanitary sewer, and then it'll move right on over to the Water Main Project. They also worked on our Terrace Drive Stormwater Project. Staff and the engineer would recommend approval of the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Matt?
So Matt, at the bottom of section B, where you have kind of the blue that runs kind of east-west, and also it looks like it runs underneath 141.
Correct.
I didn't realize we were providing water service in that section of 141.
We are not. The blue line along Towner Drive, it will be a new, so that was an alternative bid in our project, which came, which since it came in under, we're recommending that we approve the base bid with the alternative. That'll be an eight-inch trunk main, but that eight-inch main that goes under 141 or west of 141 only services our lift station, our sanitary sewer lift station, so it provides water to that lift station for maintenance, cleaning, those types of things. We're not providing water service to to homes on the west side of 141.
Other questions for Matt?
I guess segment, we've not bid segment A, right?
Correct.
Segment A remains.
Turn on your mic.
Sorry, sorry. We've not bid section A, correct?
Correct.
That'll come, that'll be the next in the process.
That'll be later. We'll have a portion of that that'll come in with the interchange, the Towner Drive interchange, and then we'll have the rest of segment A that'll tie back to 78th Avenue to make the loop.
Do we have a timetable for when we'll do segment A?
We do not at this point.
Okay.
The interchange is is in our five-year CIP, so presumably we would be in that five-year timeframe.
Because I guess, because we'll be able to service customers along Saylorville Drive through, in essence, from through segment B and C. You don't need to have all three of them. Is that right?
Yeah, the the connection from segment A back to the terminus of our water main out along 78th provides redundancy in case you have a water main break, those types of things.
Okay. Thank you.
There are.
Let me meet all of our requirements under our Xenia agreement by constructing B and C.
Most of them. There are a couple of residents in segment A that that will be still serviced by Xenia. There are just two properties.
Okay.
So, and then segment A, as that develops, that's where really segment A comes into play.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Matt, not a question, but I just, I can't help myself but make this comment on that is I, you know, I love the really favorable bidding climate that we have right now. And this is not, I didn't write down what our estimate was, it was over $9 million.
Just over $9 million.
And so, you know, got this for $3 million less than what, roughly $3 million less than what we thought we were gonna get the work done for, so that's that's incredible.
Yes. And if you like that one, you'll like the next one.
He's on a roll.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, council? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:10. We have three action items here. First is resolution number 25-93. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-94?
So moved.
Back one.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-95?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B or 4E, conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Little Beaver Creek sanitary sewer extension, Segment B, and consider resolution number 25-96, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost, consider the construction bids, consider resolution number 25-97, making award of construction contract, and consider resolution number 25-98, approving construction contract and bond. And we'll open this public hearing at 8:11.
On March 19th, the city received bids for the Little Beaver Creek sanitary sewer Phase B project, as shown here on the map. In the black line, you see that there is a segment that is dotted and a segment that is solid. The solid segment indicates that that'll be gravity trunk main. The dashed line is the force main, right where the cursor is now, is will be a lift station at the corner, northeast corner of Road Drive and a northwest 110th. We received two bids on the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $8,655,471. The low bid received was $6,250,000. Certified bid tab shows SM Henshaw and Sons, Inc. was the low bidder, approximately 27% underneath our engineer's estimate. SM Henshaw has worked in the city of Johnston on our Crescent Chase Stormwater Project. They also constructed segment 1A of our Little Beaver Creek Sanitaries. Staff and the engineer would recommend approval of this project, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Matt? Seeing none, this is a public hearing on this item. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 8:13. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-96? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-97? So moved.
Back one.
A motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-98? So moved.
Back one.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4F, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 25-104, granting a gas pipeline easement to Mid-American Energy on Outlet Z, Johnston Town Center. And we'll open this public hearing at 8:14.
Good evening. You have before you tonight really a cleanup item. When Grand State Hotel was developed next door, a gas line was needed from 62nd Avenue into the hotel to provide gas service. That area is still owned by the city with the lease to the association for maintenance. Because we own, have the underlying ownership, we do have to do a public hearing to grant an easement. So this is just a cleanup item to grant that easement to allow the gas main today outside of an easement. Happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Dave?
David, one quick question. Is the majority of that all just parking lot?
Yeah, just goes under the parking. Yep.
Any other questions for Dave? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 8:15. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 25-104? Move approval?
Back one.
Motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkehart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4G, conduct a continued, conduct a continued public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of ordinance number 1133, an official zoning map amendment to rezone 6.36 acres from R175 Medium Lot Residential to R175 Medium Lot Residential with AK animal keeping overlay. And what do we need to do here, Christine?
Are we continuing again?
No. So do we need to do anything other than just open up the public hearing?
Nope, just open the public hearing.
Okay. So we will open the public hearing then at 8:16. Dave?
Good evening. You have an application before you tonight from Krish Christiansen, asking essentially to add the animal keeping overlay to the to the 6.36 acre southern portion of the property outlined there with the red hatch, north side of Northwest 55th Avenue. The animal keeping overlay has historically, animal keeping has historically been an allowed use on the eastern Merle Hay area, particularly in this neighborhood. Cindy, there's one other map, I think, attached there that on the existing zoning map, the animal keeping overlay is the green hatched area, so all the properties to the west and to the south of this property already have that, already have that. The underlying zoning district, R175, would remain the same, so that's not proposed on this, on this application. The only change here would be the adding of the animal keeping overlay. As noted in the staff report, the overlay does allow for the keeping of animals with certain restrictions and certain requirements, setback requirements, maintenance requirements, those types of things. And staff's review of this is consistent with adjoining animal keeping overlay zoning and consistent with the overall area and with the comprehensive plan. Appquin is not here tonight, his representative is, so I'm sure they'll be able to answer any questions the council might have, but staff's understanding is the intent is to allow for the construction of a home on this portion of the property, and they want to have that ability for animal keeping. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I don't, sorry. What kind of animals are we talking about here?
The the ordinance allows, get to the right page here, horses, bovine, sheep, goats, and similar large animals. And then there's also, as the larger type of animals, so there's requirements on how many, or limits on how many animals they could have on the larger. And then there's also requirements or limitations on how many smaller animals, such as poultry, rabbits, pigeons, and those type. So it would allow for larger animals and smaller animals with limits.
How big is that size? How big is that?
Just over six acres.
Six acres. That could be, okay.
So, Dave, as I read this, so it looks like there's, so it allows for horses, bovine, sheep, goats, but the quantity limit is cumulative across all, right? So it's a limit of one or two adult animals of any kind or combination. So you could have, if you had two horses, you couldn't have any other animals, is that right?
Up to? In that category, correct.
In that larger category. But then if you have, if it's larger than for each 43,000 additional square feet, and 43,000 additional square feet, is that?
That's an acre.
An acre?
Yep.
So, so because this is larger than one acre, then it could go above the two animal?
Yeah, the the second sentence there would apply one additional adult animal, maybe add essentially for every acre of additional square feet of the lot area. So there'd be an additional five that would be permitted.
And Dave, just so that I understand this, all of the green hatched area that is already zoned for animal keeping, they would be, property owners there are subject to the same allowances or restrictions?
That's, that's correct.
That's what's being proposed here.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council?
Mayor, members of the council, Eric Cannon, 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard, here on behalf of Snyder &amp; Associates. I do apologize, Chris is not able to attend tonight, he is dealing with health scares, currently in the hospital, so we did not want to continue this any longer. I appreciate everybody's patience, both up here and in the audience. So talked to him today, he decided to move this forward and want to keep everything going here. So on this item specifically, I know the main questions are going to surround the next one. This one's really just being able to be consistent with the neighborhood. He's indicated he intends to build his house here, has horses growing up as a child in the neighborhood, and wanted to be able to have that ability on the property as well. So that is the ask for this first one, but happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Counsel, have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none. This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close, whoops. Oh, I'm sorry. If you, if you could please come up to the podium and give us your name and address?
I really didn't come here about this, but I just wanted to say, I used to work for the Iowa DNR, and when you start getting a good number of horses, or a couple of cattle, or stuff like that, one, I don't know what the ordinance says about, you know, storage and disposal of, like manure and those kind of things, but when you have two to three to four large animals, and you don't have any ground to take that manure, that might be something to take into consideration, is how is that going to be stored? How is it going to be disposed of? Do they have, you know, other ground to put that on if they can't do it there, you know, on site? There isn't a lot of land there to put, you know, that kind of material on. I used to go, I had complaints on this kind of stuff all the time when I did my work, and I just thought I'd bring that up anyways, something to consider, so.
Appreciate that, thank you. Does the applicant, I mean, I know that he has other, other properties. Do you know what he intends to do with the manure from the horses?
I apologize, I do not, so I would assume it'd be disposed of.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? If not, we will close the public hearing at 8:23. Do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1133?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion, counsel?
I have something.
I do as well, mayor.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the, the overall community feel of Easter, east of Merle Hay Road. I ride my bike on the trail, I love seeing a horse or two, cow. I think it's appropriate, I've talked to Mr. Christensen about it. I like the element of that small town, just one step away from the farm, so I will be in favor of this, thank you.
Councilmember Member Burkhardt?
I, I can't refrain from mentioning, you should probably watch your step, one step away from the farm, since we don't know exactly what's going on there, but, but...
And by the way, my garden would approve, would like the horse manure.
You might want to strike up that. I, I will be supporting this. Interestingly enough, though, this specific measure in this specific location of animal overlay did bring up a wonderful conversation with another resident, who at least expressed some concern, and, and their concern was primarily about the avian influenza, and the fact that this overlay does allow, not only for horses and for large mammals, but also for poultry and things along those lines. And so, as I make my comments and use it during this discussion time, I guess what I'd ask everybody in the city of Johnston who has kind of backyard flocks, is that they are continuing to monitor their own animals for their own health, to make sure that they're not unnecessarily or unintentionally, you know, helping perpetuate bird flu that clearly is impacting the commercial flocks within our state, but also just to make sure that they're doing their part to keep themselves safe and their families from that standpoint as well. So with that being said, I will support this measure, but I think it's always good to have public service announcements, to make sure that we're, we're out there looking out for the good of everybody. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4H, conduct a continued public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of ordinance number 1134, an official zoning map amendment to rezone 4.8 acres from R175 Medium Lot Residential District to R2 Low Density Mixed Residential District. And we'll open this public hearing at 8:26.
Good evening. If this looks familiar in area, this is the northern half of the property that we just talked about with the rezoning for the animal keeping. So the applicant, Chris Christensen, has requested a rezoning from the existing R175 for the northern 4.8 acres of this property, from R175 Single Family Residential to R2 Low Density Mixed Residential District. Thrive 2040 Comprehensive Plan for this area identifies this area as suburban residential, and in that description, it talks about predominantly single-family detached units on lots ranging from quarter to half an acre in size. The suburban residential district also includes a potential for some single-family by-attached and other low-intensity attached housing options. Included in the staff report on pages two and three, and then getting into page, about on page three, is a pretty good description of kind of the difference between the R175 and the R2. R175 does allow single-family detached, as well as some by-attached units with some certain conditions and requirements. The R2 allows those same uses, but also allows, in addition, up to small townhouse developments, which are defined in the zoning code as up to four units in, in one building. And there, as I said, that breakdown's on the bottom of page three, kind of depicting the, the different uses that are allowed in each R175 and the R2 district. With that change, then, there is also a change in setbacks and bulk requirements as far as how the site could be developed. Included in the staff report is a concept plan that's been submitted by the applicant, which depicts six fourplex units, which would be permitted in that R2, for a total of 24 units over the 4.8 acres. The, there's the concept plan showing, showing that those 24 units as described. If you want to go back to the other maps, Cindy? As far as adjoining land uses, this map was prepared to, to kind of depict, this is an area of the community where there is some diversity in, in both housing style and, as well as commercial and industrial uses. The green areas are all some form of attached housing. The pink is a senior residential. We've got industrial just to the west, and then obviously, as you get to the east along, excuse me, industrial to the east along Beaver Drive, and then as you get to the west along Merle Hay, the commercial corridor that, that exists there. This item did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on January 31st. There was a motion to consider approval of this rezoning. That included a condition that the maximum density on the site would be limited to 24 units. That motion failed by a vote of four, or, excuse me, two in favor, four opposed. And so since this comes before you without a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, chapter 190.02, 4.3 of our zoning code does require, for the council to approve this, three-fourth majority of the council is required to approve this and overturn that lack of a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant's representative is here, and I guess I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions, and believe he can probably provide additional context on their proposed plan.
Any questions for Dave?
David, in the, I do, mayor, I'm sorry, in the attachments for this item, there were more than one townhome layout. One townhome layout had a, a street connection to 52nd Street, and I'm, it confused me, and it shows, it shows 40 units. I'm trying to get the name of it for you, it's something like Johnston Townhomes 62624. Do you see that one? Yes, up, two up from where your cursor is there. What is this diagram?
I'll let Eric speak to this, but I believe this is a depiction just to show sort of how many units could fit on that parcel.
If it were rezoned to R2?
If it were rezoned to R2, but did not have a condition of...
Of the only 24.
Correct.
In the plan that, okay, so I understand, I see what's happening, but instead, he's saying he's only going to do 24, and leave that sort of southern, yes, the southern part of the site is unoccupied. Could he come later and ask for additional units in that unoccupied portion to the south?
Zoning was conditioned on the 24 cap. The only way that could happen is if it went through a rezoning, same process that we're going through now, a rezoning process that would go through Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council.
Okay.
Can you repeat, when you say the zoning was conditioned, is that a, is it...
So, if the council chooses to put a condition on, which the applicant at P&amp;Z stated they were agreeable to, and the, the motion the P&amp;Z made that ultimately was unsuccessful was a condition that that, that the development be capped at 24 units. So if that's the condition imposed by the council as part of the rezoning, if that were to ever, there would be some desire to do more units in the future, that would require a rezoning process, just like we're going through today, to remove that.
Okay, so that's a condition that isn't in place currently?
Correct.
But it is a condition we could put in place?
Correct.
And if I could clarify that, a conditional rezoning, the applicant actually has to sign it before the close of the public hearing. So if you wanted to do a conditional rezoning, and we don't have a signed agreement to that, we would need to continue the public hearing one more time to allow that to happen. So the public hearing should not be closed if that is the council's desire.
So you couldn't, you couldn't approve something tonight and then have it signed after the effect?
No, the Iowa code says it has to be signed before the close of the public hearing.
I have one more question, if you... David, the, what about the set of townhomes that are on the south side of Northwest 55th Avenue, shown, yeah, and go back to that previous slide that you just showed? So 55th Avenue is south? Yes. Is that being discussed tonight, or not, those townhomes there?
No.
They have nothing to do with tonight? Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
David, it's my understanding that without any zoning change, the applicant could build duplexes on this property. Is that correct?
The, the R175, as it exists today, does allow what are defined as two-unit dwellings, a duplex, a duplex or twin home, kind of interchangeable terms used for those, subject to site plan review, so that would be a site plan that would go to Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, and then there's certain standards that would have to be met as far, that we'd review as part of that site plan review process. So that is correct. Anything above a by-attached, two units, is not permitted in R175, but would be permitted up to the four with the R2.
So how many units, assuming, let's just hypothetically, if the applicant wanted to build duplexes on this property, how many, how many units of duplexes could be built?
I have not done that, I don't, would have to defer to the applicant's representative, if they've looked at concepts for that.
Okay. Any other questions for David?
Quickly, David, the, the property neighborhood there is all single-unit homes, right?
Immediately to the east is single-family, immediately to the west is single-family, and then as you, the green areas there, like to the north, kind of to the, to the southeast, those are by-attached or attached townhouse-style developments.
Is all still R1? Still R1?
There is some R2 there, like across the street, there's a, part of that is zoned R2.
Okay. Do you know how many units are there in that location?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine.
Those are by-attached units, I believe.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Dave?
David, while, while that map is up, the, there's a portion of that that is not on the maps you provided, listed as R2, but you're depicting as, as, are they, that green you said is by-attached, or are those...
Green is somebody, the townhome are some sort of by-attached, so to, like, to the south, yeah, where Cindy's got the cursor there, those are by-attached units that were done under our old code, that, they went to a, through a special use process, so they were approval to do, I think there's four units, there are two buildings of two units each. The area to the northeast, shown in green along 50th, was done as a PUD.
Okay. But that is, that's a, there's R1 area otherwise?
But those are, there's a kind of a mix, there's some single-family, and there's some by-attached in there as well.
And, and immediately north, where that's kind of a, I don't know, a flag shape with a drive, and then it veers to the west, that was green on the previous map? Listed as R1, do we know, was that grandfathered in as well?
I don't, I'd have to, that's, I'd have to look back at the approval history, and that's, that development's been there for quite a long time, so.
So, so the, the homes, the do, the twin homes that are on this map, shown on 57th Avenue, where it intersects with 54th Court, those are two twin homes, right? Yeah, I guess it's three. And then over there to the east side, yeah. I mean, those are pretty nice, I mean, pretty nice, full-size homes, they just happen to share one wall. So, and those are R1, as currently zoned?
Correct.
So they could be built on, on this property too? Okay, as it currently is?
Under certain, yep, with approval and under, with conditions.
But what he's proposing, this R2, is going to be more similar to, it could almost be more similar to that whole group of townhomes that you saw in the lower, yeah, that, right there. That's sort of the proposal here in terms of density.
Uh, no, those are eight, 12 unit buildings. Yeah, those are pretty large.
So it's kind of hard, I mean, I, I understand why you put the green in there, you're trying to show anything above, single-family home, but there's quite a difference between the feel.
There's a variety, there's definitely a variety, yep.
Quite a big difference between the feel of those different properties.
Correct.
David, you're a professional planner, so it seems like our, our...
David, you're a professional planner, so it seems like our, our rules sort of treat by attached two homes differently than a four-home town, townhome. From a planner's perspective, why is that? Is, why is there view, why is it viewed that that's a different, you know, from a, either from a, why is that viewed differently?
Yeah, so when we did, we updated our zoning code and we officially adopted it in May of 2023, we worked really hard at defining housing types and styles and then trying to determine sort of what districts each housing type or style should fall into. A lot of what you see under the R2 definitions are what the planning profession sort of calls missing middle housing. It's, it's the, looking for folks that aren't looking for the yard maintenance and, you know, they want to hit an either a lower, a lower cost point normally, in that you're, you know, a lot, you get a lot of first-time home buyers or seniors that, that just don't need the yard and the playground and all that sort of stuff in the backyard. And so that's what the R2 district was really intended to do, to allow a variety of housing And so we have historically had a process in our R1 districts where you can do a by attached under various regulations, and so we refined those a little bit. And then we really looked at R2 to look at the other types of housing styles that don't get into the full-blown, you know, historically in Johnston, we've done a lot of traditional townhome developments that might have the six, eight, 12 units in a, in a building and under various styles. But our code really was largely silent on everything in between a by attached in those townhomes, and that's really what the R2 was intended to do, was to, to allow more of, more of a variety of housing styles.
And I know, obviously, at one point, because there was some, I mean, when this was taken to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the staff recommended approval, and I think, as I understood it, part of the reason or the rationale for that was sort of a view that these kind of, what I would call fourplexes, are pretty consistent with by attached, which are nearby the property. Is that, and kind of, I, I mean, you're, you're the staff, you're-
Yeah, I think that's-
Why, why did the staff sort of feel comfortable sort of with the staff recommendation?
Yeah, and that, I think that's fair. You know, it's a, it, it comes down to an efficiency. I mean, obviously, every time you add a break in the wall and you separate buildings, you're stretching out the length of street, the length of water, the length of sewer. And so from an efficiency perspective and what it's going to cost to make those developable lots, you know, and if you're looking at, 24 units is not a, a big project to spread those costs across. So if you're able, Eric can talk to his, the applicant's sort of desire, but anytime you're able to reduce those costs, that makes the project more viable. So, I mean, that, if we were talking six-unit, eight-unit buildings, I mean, that's, then you're in a traditional townhome. You know, there are some of those in, on this map, but really those are pushed closer to the commercial land uses, so.
Right, that's-
A little bit of background, I guess.
I appreciate that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? Okay, thank you, Dave. Eric?
Hello, Mayor. Members of the council, again, appreciate you guys' patience on this, and I will try to touch on a few points that came up at P&amp;Z as well, just I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion here that'll, that'll outline these. So, Ron, to answer your question, the original concept of 40 units, we had in there looking at how can we most efficiently use the property? The biggest concern with that was one density, staff expressed some concern with that. It also triggered a second connection, which would have looked at getting through that neighborhood to the east. We felt that was very intrusive, and that was really not a desire that this property owner wants, lives in this community as a, as a corporate resident of this community and, and so wants to be respectful in that manner. So that was a lot of dialogue and it made sense to try and pare the project down. Again, trying to find a happy medium here was really the intent of what they were doing. So again, that's why we're at 24, and I, and I understand the conditions, I was not aware it had to be signed, that, first I'd heard that, but again, the owner said that at P&amp;Z, I spoke to him today, there was a lot of concern at P&amp;Z of what if, right? You rezoned this property, R2, sells it to somebody, somebody comes in and puts in max density and, because they have it by right now. He wanted to control all of that. Again, he's committed to doing this project, but if, if that makes everyone comfortable and that was a dialogue with the commission was, we'll, we'll cap it at 24. That's exactly what he wants to do. What he's showing is what he wants to do. That has not changed since we made our application. So that consistency has been there all along. I want to touch on traffic, because I'm sure it'll come up. That was a big discussion, and I think part of the reality is 57th and 55th are not signalized at Merle Hay. I don't care if you've got one car waiting or if you've got 10 cars waiting, at certain points in the day, it's just really hard to get onto Merle Hay and turn left. You're going to have to go down to Johnson Drive to where there's a signal, and in that, and that's just some reality to it. There's not much more trip generation here with, with 24 townhomes than you would have with the 13 single-family homes next door, different demographics. You are seniors, you are catering to young families, young professionals that are in there. Really, we're talking schoolteachers, firefighters, the people that can afford to live in green lettuces. I mean, we are talking about the missing middle and the diversity of housing stock that, that is thirsted for in this community, so. The smaller the units allow for a maximum of open space here, I think Ron had hit on a little bit, we do have a lot of open space here, more than you would see with traditional single-family. That was something he felt was beneficial, we're more than 150 feet away from any resident next to us. If you go with traditional single-family, those houses are going to be bigger, deeper, sit for their way from the road. Townhomes allow you to reduce setbacks, pull everything in a little bit tighter, and again, maximize that open space and the separation from the neighbors next door. I think the thing that this map pretty much tells a great story of is the diversity of this neighborhood. This is one of the oldest and most diverse neighborhoods in Johnston, which makes it complicated, right? It is in my backyard, I understand that concern from folks, but if you see the industrial use and the commercial use and these estate lots that were, a lot of them were plotted in the 30s and 40s, they have been here a long time. The neighbor just to the southwest of here, to be polite, has a lot of outdoor storage of stuff. So it is a very diverse neighborhood. I understand these is people's homes and their backyards, but there are also other folks here that aren't great neighbors, that, that is part of, of what this neighborhood is. So embracing that is important, but there is a lot of multifamily here. The Triton style, the, the bottom green one, that is a three-story product that's there, that, that is not what they're asking to do. We provided an elevation drawing, this is a two-story, traditional-looking style home, it's just four smaller homes on there versus one big one or two larger ones. Your comment, we could put approximately 50 duplexes in here, but again, not the owner's desire to do that. He wants 24 houses in here. He has a business to south of here, he has 30 employees, there's only three of them that live in Johnston, because they just can't afford to live here. So, I mean, those are the realities that he sees day in, day out, as he runs his business, he's trying to provide that benefit for this community. I would lean on your staff. I mean, they're employed here for a reason, the comprehensive plan exists for a reason. You know, the missing middle is real, and, and I think, if not here, then where? I mean, everywhere is going to be infill in somebody's backyard, and if now, now, then when? That's a question that the development community is going to ask, and I think there's a big message that's sent here, that when you have an opportunity to infill property that staff supports, the comprehensive plan supports, are we trying to find that product in this community or not? And I think that's a big question. Appreciate everybody's concern on this, I know this has been a long time coming, appreciate your patience. Wanted to try and get a full council because of the supermajority that we need. Apologize again for Chris not being able to be here, but happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Also, any questions for Eric?
I do, ma'am, but if you do, go for it.
Yeah, this is a tough property for me because I truly believe that it's hard for first-time buyers to get anywhere into Johnston, and I'd like to see a more diverse mix of our population. But I, but I am kind of concerned about the, the real, you know, what I kind of see as very small townhomes. If, if, would, would the owner maybe consider twin homes, but maybe in a, approaching the planning and zoning for a more, maybe a tighter spacing, if, like a PUD? You know, are those some thoughts here, or is it just because it's zoned this way and it says we have to have so much separation for twin homes and that's it? Because, you know, if, if, if someone were to come to, to the council with a innovative idea that still included more, a home that was a little bit more single-family as opposed to kind of this crunched-together townhome, I think that would be really cool. There's some places, like along 86th Street that is just west of Councilman Cope's house, there's a development there of those smaller individual homes, you know, that, you know, they're kind of, you know, it's kind of got a very kind of tight feel, but a lot of landscaping's put into it and a lot of really interesting homes. I mean, it's probably a lot more than Chris wants to spend, but I think that that would be a bigger sell for me. Thank you.
Yeah, and we, we did look at, at duplexes through here because they are allowed by right. And I think the, to be frank, the density that comes with those was something Chris, Chris is looking to build his house here. So I mean, it wasn't something he was looking for is to build 50 townhomes. And to be honest, a lot of the feedback we've gotten is, we want single-family or nothing. And so we feel like that fight is going to be there no matter what, whether they're duplexes or fourplexes. And really a fourplexes, two duplexes put together, it allows for more open space, creates some more efficiencies, yes, but I don't know if pulling them apart or sticking them together really changes a lot of the narrative. And so I, I guess he was looking for just the opportunity here. And again, a lot of this was based on a lot of discussion with staff. Where do you feel the best way to go is? What's the best product you see? What do you think can be supported? And so it's a challenge, right? We'll find a lot of feedback tonight, may have to go back to the drawing board, if Chris is even interested in that. He obviously has invested a lot of money to get to this point, so appreciate your comments on that, and, and I'm sure Chris is listening, so we'll hear those.
Sir, I missed the, the, the argument between a twin home and a, and a townhome, other than I heard there's not much difference between four units, kind of glued together, so to speak, and two. You then went on to talk about he's building his home here and the density, but that, I, I didn't follow that. Can you elaborate on that a little bit for me?
So, again, we'd started with the 40 units, that original concept that filled this whole area up. Felt, staff felt that was too dense, likely, was going to be a problem with the neighborhood next door, provided the, the street connection. So we felt pairing that down was a good idea from a density standpoint. Less units, smaller footprint, more open space. Good things we felt that we could bring to this project. If you would go to duplexes, now you're pulling everything apart, it's filling up more space, less open space, takes up more property to do that, and so really you're not getting that different of a product. You're going to have the same number of people in here, you're still going to have townhomes in here. All things that we felt were angst with the neighborhood. So our benefit by doing fourplexes versus duplexes is smaller footprint, more open space, less building area that's kind of perceived the size of the project. It's a smaller footprint of the project itself. Based on those discussions with staff and with the owner and, and some feedback we got from the neighborhood, we felt that was a benefit. And, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we, we do these projects all over the metro, I don't know if there's any fourplexes in Johnston. There's apartment buildings, like in the pink, there's the Triton style, three-story, 16-plex buildings. This truly is a missing middle even for Johnston. There, there just really aren't these fourplexes that exist here, so. Felt it was a good product, there'd be a lot of opportunity here for it, so that was really the, kind of the decision-making to get there.
Thanks for taking the time to explain that a little bit better for me. Your client also, as I'm aware, and, and this is where I, I hope you can either set the record straight or give some enhanced understanding as to what's happened, we're all aware that this has been continued and continued, and I know you've addressed that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your client, you know, kind of seeing this through when he couldn't be here personally. In February, I, I learned though, or either late February or early March, I, I did learn that there was some kind of struggles in communication with concerned neighbors. In other words, some alleged threats that someone made at one point toward another and things along those lines. Since that time, have there been constructive conversations or any conversations with these neighbors to try to come to some sort of understanding? And if, you know, if you can elaborate as much as possible as to, as to how those went and where we are?
I, I can't speak for Chris outside of what he told me. I know there was, I would say, an elevated discussion. One of the neighbors did, I think, provide an email to you talking about transient workers and, and those people living in my neighborhood, and I think Chris took offense to that because of his business and the people he's trying to employ. And, and, you know, being a future resident here, I mean, just, so I, I can't speak exactly how constructive any of those conversations were. Clearly, there's opposition to the project, and, and Chris as a property owner is frustrated, feeling, you know, property owners have rights, we've worked with staff for months, and to get to this position and be willing to make a concession on the density and the number of units and, and all those things, he's tried every step of the way to, to be a partner in this, and feels as though either we're going to put single-family in, like that orange, which is the only traditional single-family on this map, or nothing. And that is the only feedback he's really gotten from the neighborhood is, we want 70-foot-wide single-family lots in here or nothing. We don't want any townhomes. There was discussion on, we can do duplexes in here, and I don't know if people took that as a threat or not. I think it was him trying to say, by right, I can put duplexes in here. And I don't think that communication was great, because I don't know if Chris fully understands that or the neighborhood fully understands that, but I don't know how productive it's been, to be honest with you. I don't think great.
Thank you. I just have two real quick questions for Eric. First off, in your recent comments, you said there still will be townhomes in this area. Are you talking about like if a buy, you would consider a buy attached as a townhome, that's what you meant by that? So two houses together as a townhome?
Yep.
Okay. And then, second of all, you kind of mentioned something about traffic, so it's kind of want to make sure I understand, your, your thought process is that if, if traffic, if people who live in this area and are wanting to go exit, in essence, to the west, the way that they're going to do that is they're going to go up to whatever this, is that 57th?
55th and 57th.
55th, and they'll take a right on 55th, go to Beaver, and then go back to down Johnston Drive, because there, there's a signal and they can get out. They're not going to go down 55th and take a left on Merle Hay.
And I guess my point was-
But I, I, I would, I've driven on 55th and I would agree with that, so.
And, and I think that there was a lot of discussion on traffic and increasing traffic and not being able to get out, and, and my point was, there's not signals there now, they're not planned in the future. It, it's tough to turn left at Merle Hay at certain times of day, you know what?
I, I just want to make sure that was, when you said that, that that was, I was interpreting that right, and I, I would agree with that, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Eric?
Thank you very much.
Eric, you bet.
Good evening, I'll try to keep this short. Stuart Spencer, 5625 Northwest 52nd Street in Johnston. I also was on planning and zoning for eight and a half years, so understand kind of the, the gist there a little bit. So through my time through with P&amp;Z, in my time with the city, definitely been an advocate for development. That's why I joined P&amp;Z back in the day, and, and definitely for it. So I think everything that development brings to the city, that's a good thing, and that's why I think a lot of you do what you do too. So with that being said, our property to the east, so my wife and I live east of this in that 13-house development there, that's R1. To the, to the west is R1, to the south, where Mr. Christensen's going to be putting his, his place is R1, and to the north of that is R1. There's a little lot that's R2 to the northwest a little bit, but I, I don't, I don't know if it, I can't speak for my neighbors, but I'd be for a buy attached. If, R175, I'm 100% with, my wife, my wife and I bought our house back in '08, been in the area since, for a long time, and it is, it is a very unique area. There, there's, there's cattle, there's, there's horses, we love that about the area. And, and just to the east of our property is a, is a nice commercial property that looks like a house. A lot of people think that our, that, you know, that's a house right next to us, but it's actually a commercial property engineering firm. it's actually a commercial property engineering firm. Um, so anyways, my, 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 my main concern is R2, uh, the density that R2 offers. Um, my concern is if, if, if it gets pushed through, um, and, and I know that there's a condition on it, but once, if it gets pushed through, we have to come back through the process, and I think it'd be easier for it to get pushed through next time. Um, and, and it just, the, the condensed, the, the density for R2 in general is just too dense for me, uh, from my personal perspective. Um, and then also, uh, site plans change. Uh, things change, uh, and, and, um, just, just, um, my two cents there. Also, uh, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, the, the city of Johnston's done a great job over the years of stair stepping, uh, to Dave's point, kind of, um, zoning and, and putting R2 in the middle of, uh, where everything around it is R1. I, I just don't think it's, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan, so, thank you.
I'm Erin Spencer, 5625 Northwest 52nd Street. Um, I'm Stuart's wife, so, I'll, I'll kind of, um, tell a little bit more, uh, of the story. So, Stu and I moved into our home in 2008, so we've been here for quite some time. Um, we were really drawn to that small-town feel that we talked about tonight, that really blends the original Johnston homesteads with newer homes that, um, still have that country feel that are right within the city. Um, we've fallen in love with the, the same area that Mr. Christensen has, and his family has been here for, for generations, and we really set our roots and are growing our family here. We see this across our neighborhood, um, there's not a lot of, uh, turnover in our, our development of properties. Um, we recognize that there's a need for diversity in housing to help in, to help attract and grow our, our city. However, the zoning changes, uh, that, that Mr. Christensen has proposed has, um, higher density complex, seems like it'll attract more of a transient population and is not necessarily a fit for an area where roots really grow strong, and we've been able to, to grow families that have contributed to, to, um, the city of Johnston. Under the current zoning of R1, Mr. Christensen would still be able to develop duplexes, we've talked about that. And I believe a zoning change for, for that parcel of land is not necessary, nor is it consistent with the zoning of the immediate area, and we've already talked about a lot of that. Um, a change to R2 would allow Mr. Christensen to potentially place even more units, we've talked about that too. Um, and there are certainly concerns around the longer-term impacts of the higher density, um, being on a dead-end road. So, you were asking the question earlier about, um, which way to go. It's not 57th, it would be 58, or 55th, it would be 57th, and you would have to drop down on Beaver to Johnston Drive to get onto, um, to, to, with, uh, the lights. Um, this road has been used as a cut-through between Merle Hay and Beaver and is really heavily trafficked. Um, I wanted to point out, and I pointed this out at the planning and zoning meeting, that a few years ago, uh, the city in coordination with the school district ran a traffic study on Northwest 57th, and the results of that study led the school board to deem Northwest 57th as a safety hazard, and I believe that the higher density will only add to, to that problem. So, um, please also consider some of the learnings that we've experienced with a dead-end street. Um, parking is only allowed on the east side of the road, and higher density will only create more parking issues, um, on a dead-end road. Um, we support Mr. Christensen's effort to make this an attractive area to put down roots and experience all that Johnston has to offer, but we strongly believe that this can be achieved through the current zoning and not having to rezone to allow for that higher density. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
My name is Jeremy Grandieri. I'm at 5626 Northwest 52nd Street, just the northwest house that backs to this proposed, um, rezoning. So we purchased our home in 2018 and, um, absolutely love the area. And, the, you know, I, I will speak to the parking and traffic concerns. There are certainly, um, a significant amount of concerns with the way that this is outlined. It's a busy road, it has a straight way to Beaver and Merle Hay, as discussed, and the city bumpouts to reduce speed haven't worked, and we're potentially adding 50 more vehicles into this mix. Um, so my friend lives in a development like this in Marquee, and parking is absolutely a challenge. Every time we visit him, we always must park on the street. So it's evident in their residential divisions that there are obvious areas of the city where this high density, um, is, and, and I just don't know that the proposed plan has really great parking options either. Um, I, I echo my neighbor's sentiments with, I would be okay with it staying R1, potentially doing the twin homes or buy-attached or whatever it is that they're referenced. Um, but I, I believe that R1 is in line with much of the neighborhood, and honestly, a lot of the properties as listed in the staff report, um, this map only dictates a small portion. If you were to magically raise it, you would see a significant amount of R1 as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 5300 Northwest 57th Avenue. My property puts up from the west to the proposed property. I've been there since 1986, so I knew when that was all open fields, I've seen it all developed, and the current housing that, or the housing that has gone in since then is very compatible with the neighborhood, it works very well. I do have concerns like the rest of my neighbors, um, a lot with the traffic. I work downtown, so every morning I'm trying to get out onto Northwest Beaver Avenue, and I can sit there for quite some time, just to, where you were proposing, you know, you have to go out to Beaver, turn right, go down to Johnston Drive, go back right to get to Merle Hay, but even to get to, uh, out onto Beaver during heavy traffic times is a challenge. So, um, I have no, um, issues with the R1 zoning and twin homes or buy-attached homes, there are several throughout the neighborhood, and I'm fine with those, but I think putting in fourplexes, um, is going to really crowd that neighborhood, and I do have concerns of what's going to happen down the road. Are there going to be more added in there? So, thank you.
Sarah Grandieri, 5626 Northwest 52nd. I am Jeremy's wife. Um, I just echo a lot of the concerns of everybody that's already been up here. Um, I think parking along Northwest 57th will create a larger issue than it currently is with the high-density proposed. Um, one thing I did want to bring up is the, the, how they mentioned reducing the number of units within that lot due to consideration for the remaining, or the rest of the neighborhood and the neighbors. Um, I believe during the planning and zoning meeting, there was comment, were comments made that it was reduced due to the ravine that is located, uh, to the south, let's see, southeast portion of that property. So it would cost quite a bit more, a significant amount, for them to be able to deal with that ravine. There was a map, I think, that showed a small portion of it, um, so it's just a realist, but I think the lessening of the units was based on cost, not necessarily the consideration of the neighborhood, as I thought it was proposed, proposed in the planning and zoning. Um, and I just think the R1 with the buy-attached duplexes would suit the neighborhood sufficiently as it has with the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Brianna Vatier, 5609 Northwest 52nd Street. I wanted to echo what my neighbors have said here as well. My husband and I purchased our home in 2016, um, and have located there, um, now have two children, one that's running the neighborhood, um, loves to go across the street to that bike trail there, but does have to cross 57th Street to do that, one that will hopefully be running around by next summer as well. Um, when we purchased, we obviously knew that that land, uh, there was most likely going to be, um, built on at some point. Uh, we did some research and understood that that was most likely going to be more of those single-family homes, and based our buying decision on that, um, really love the neighborhood and would love to stay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Mayor Drenfield and the council for hearing our comments. And, uh, Bill Gibbons, uh, 5610 Northwest 52nd. So we're on the west side of, of Northwest 52nd Street there, so this would be behind us, you know, at our house. But nevertheless, and we understand, yeah, somebody wants to develop that property at some point, and that's understandable, but I don't know if I can add anything new to this, but to say that I think as well, we're totally in favor of the buy-attached duplex style-type homes going in there. I think those fourplex, you know, two-story, uh, units are not really consistent with, you know, the surrounding area, and it is going to increase the density of, of the population in that area. I've seen some of these developments over in Ankeny, and, and I, just the traffic in and out of that street, I, some of our friends that live in Ankeny, they have these tiny little driveways in front of their houses, and they only really can park like one car, you know, on that, and then if there's not any room on the street to park, it's pretty tough. I don't know how wide that's going to be exactly, I haven't seen all the drawings, but that can be a, a real issue. So I guess also the traffic. And then it, it is a little bit concerning that, yeah, they're proposing 24 units now, and maybe that is, you know, for concerns for the neighbors, but at some point, they could come back and revisit this and, and go for the additional units to fill in that space. And then they would likely attach to the, you know, the little stub there at the bottom of 52nd Street so that, you know, they could probably come in and out both those streets. There again, both of them coming out onto Northwest 57th Avenue, which, you know, is a heavily-traveled area and a lot of school bus stops there, uh, in the afternoon, a lot of children in that neighborhood, so those are some, you know, concerns that we have. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council on this item? If not, Eric, anything additionally? Counsel, have any further questions?
Mayor, I guess my, my question is more of kind of logistics moving forward as to how we potentially proceed through this. Um, we cannot close the hearing without, uh, without a signed, you know, indication if that's the route that the, um, council chooses, but in essence, we could still see if that is even a viable option within the council. Is that correct? In other words, we could, we could potentially ha- hold a vote to, to approve that, we just can't close the hearing? Or what, what happens?
I think if council wants to gauge whether there is interest in a conditional rezoning, I suggest someone make a motion to continue the public hearing so that staff can pursue conditional rezoning and see if that passes. And then that would be a procedure that continues the public hearing to the next meeting, gives staff the opportunity to get in writing a conditional rezoning agreement, and then that would come back at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess sort of to follow up with kind of your line of questioning, Councilman Burke, it seems to me we have sort of three options, three potent, the council has three potential options. One is, we could approve the zoning with no limit on the number of units, um, and that would allow for up to 40 townhome units, at least, based on this drawing. Um, or, two, we could deny the rezoning, um, or not, deny could just be frankly, by not having four votes for option one. Or the third option is the, is establishing some sort of conditional cap, but that clearly cannot be done tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of, of those three options, I, I'm supportive of the third option of the capping it at 24 units, which, um, it sounds like the developer is comfortable with. And, and I think as, as I look at it, I was just kind of looking at, um, there's a neighborhood, um, kind of to the north that has the buy-attached homes, it's kind of north and east of the proposed property, and there's, there's a total of 30 homes in, in that property, um, and that landmass there. So it's 30, it's 15 buy-attached units, so 30 residents, that looks like basically about the same size as, and I, I realize that that's rough estimating, but since we have it, nobody's actually gone through and done an estimate. So you have an option of, you could have, if, if we did, if, if this was denied and the, and the, and the applicant decided to build buy-attached homes, it looks like to me, he could build 30 buy-attached units on this property. Or he could build, uh, townhomes with only 24 units, if the, if the conditional cap, which to me would produce less traffic and which would produce kind of less burden on the, the surrounding area. And so that's, that's why to me, I'm supportive of, uh, putting the 20, the, the 24 limit on, on the number, the, the conditional zoning approach. Um, and, and recognize that obviously that, that means we would have to table it again tonight, but that would be my preferred approach, um, of those three options. And I, I would not support the, a rezoning with no limit of 40.
And, sorry, just a quick reminder, Mike just reminded me, there is the supermajority requirement, so whether it's a conditional rezoning or a rezoning as is, it does require four i's.
Right. And, and, and so to a certain extent, if there's not four votes, if, if, if there's not four members of the council prepared to say, "Look, I, I'm, I'll support tabling it, but we'll vote at the next council meeting for a conditional rezoning," then, uh, you know, we can probably, I don't know, what you do at that point, but.
Um, so, so we, we should start this, I feel like we should, you know, sort of say what we're going to do, so we don't spend all our time doing a vote this way and a vote this way. I'm not inclined to support this, um, the rezoning. I, I really feel bad that we don't have more, um, opportunity for people to get into the housing market in Johnston. But as I told, uh, Mr. Christensen, when we were talking on the phone, I don't know, month, six weeks ago, whenever it was before the first time this was supposed to come here, I said that I was going to listen to the neighborhood and that I respect people that come to the meetings and say, "We bought our home, and this, and you're making a change in what we expected." And even though we can say up and down that this would be good for Johnston to get more entry-level, um, people into a housing market, as I told Mr. Christensen at the time, I said, "I'm going to respect what people have to say when they come to the meeting." And, um, I pretty much have voted against rezoning if there's an outstanding group of people that come and say, "It's not what we expected, we didn't want this to happen." I think, I, I understand 100% the city's arguments, city staff's arguments about the different kinds of zoning, that's what makes it great. I think it's a great neighborhood, it's got all sorts of different opportunities, um, but in this case, it's a change in rezoning, and I'm not going to support it.
Well, that puts an interesting twist in things. I'd go next, if you're willing, Mayor. Um, I, I support and echo what's been said by my neighboring council members on either side. Uh, Councilmember Cope, uh, was incredibly astute in, in kind of pointing out that we did have some of those neighbors, especially on 52nd, indicate, uh, the traffic and certainly the parking were a concerns, in that if there is the potential for even greater density through a twin home, um, that, that doesn't accomplish or, or help kind of solve that problem. I, I struggle from the standpoint of, uh, I think that, uh, twin homes would be great too, but it's not my land. And, and quite frankly, what makes sense both economically and what makes sense for the developer is up to the developer. And, and frankly, to some extent, I can, uh, you know, kind of cast my sentiment- And, and frankly, to some extent, I can, you know, kind of cast my sentiments and my wishes, but at the end of the day, it, it really isn't me who's either footing the bill for that type of construction or selling those to individual owner and occupant or, or however they're going to be occupied. What I can't stomach, however, is almost shrugging our shoulders and saying, it's a hodgepodge of zoning in that area. And we've got this collection and that collection, and consequently, what's it going to hurt if we change the zoning to R2 and, and that type of density in that regard? This is our opportunity, as rare as it becomes, to try to consolidate some of that and make it more consistent. I always sheepishly think to some extent, when it comes to our professional developers in our community, and, and they get recognized once a year, that they so humbly and graciously include us in the development process. And frankly, I'm not sure that it is deserving, but this is one of those times where we can contribute to the developing process by trying to add some consistency to, to an area. And so at this point, I am, I, I will say, I definitely don't support option one, so I was glad to hear you say that. If, if I were to approve this, it would have to come to some sort of restrictions in place, but at this point, I, I don't see myself advocating for rezoning to an R2.
Other comments?
Yeah, well, yes, I came here with the open mind to hear what the residents have to say. You are the neighbors that will be up there, you are the one who will be, I don't leave that, so it's more of you what you'll have to do. I think rezoning will not help it. I've been on that street and I've visited Stot's Place several times, I've been there on that street. That's a very unique neighborhood. I know you, you'll have some kind of a beef farm up there, buy, buy honey from him, so it's a very good, unique neighborhood, and having this high density for, for unit homes makes it really hard to have that unique, uniqueness of that neighborhood. So I do not think I'm going to support the rezoning to R2. R1 is, I think, is sufficient enough there to make it unique as is. So my, I will not support this rezoning at this time.
I hear you going last. Well, I'm, I'm, I, I agree with Tom. I think Mr. Christensen has, has tried very hard to accommodate the wishes of everybody and taken into all the considerations. A four-unit building is just two, two-unit buildings, and, you know, having 24 that could be single-family units, meaning it's a four-unit complex, but they'd be of the size that a small family could go into them, rather than singles and whatever, in my opinion. I think he took into consideration having the extra land available instead of packing it in there with single-family homes and duplexes. I think he, he tried very hard to keep it as open as possible to stay within the, because that's how the neighborhood is. So I, with, you know, with, with what Tom, with Councilman Cope said, I, I would like to see this move forward with some kind of limitations, but that's where we're at.
So I'll just make a quick comment, and that is that what I found most appealing about what was being proposed here is the fact that, you know, we are criticized all the time for not having affordable housing in our community. We don't have affordable housing for our older citizens, our older residents, we don't have affordable housing for young professionals, the, you know, the entry level for young families. And I saw this as an opportunity to maybe move in that direction and provide some affordable housing for, for young workers and, and for our older residents. So, you know, I can count and I, I, you know, I, I think we're heading in a direction not to approve what's been requested here. Eric, did you want to make any additional comments?
Yeah, I guess, given the light of some of the feedback here, we would request to pull this item. I mean, I, I appreciate everybody's time on this. I'm sorry this took so long to get here. Really wanted to be in a position where we had everybody here and we could make sure that we had this conversation. I think it's healthy to allow Chris to make some decisions to move forward. Got some good feedback from the neighborhood. Hopefully that is consistent going forward, to be honest with you. I know it's late, so I, I do appreciate that, but whatever formal requests we need to make, I, I don't think there's any benefit in continuing this.
I mean, in light of the applicant's statements, I don't think there needs to be a vote. The item's been pulled at their request.
Okay. Thank you all for coming this evening. I think we need to close the public hearing.
Officially, we can close the hearing and then be done.
We will close the public hearing at 9:26. And given the applicant's request to withdraw, no action is required. We have completed the action on the public hearing, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please. Councilman Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
If.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider approval of the second reading of ordinance number 1135, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Johnston, Iowa, 2007, for the purpose of adopting by reference water, sanitary sewer, stormwater, and solid-based service account policies, fees, and charges.
There's been no changes and no comments received. Staff would like to request we waive the third reading and adopt and publish too.
Any questions for Matt?
This does not adjust any fees, that we're not raising fees or?
No, that would come with the policy that would come back for adoption by city council. This just gives us the ability to do that.
Any further questions for Matt? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1135?
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Can we add in with this reading that we move to waive the third reading and adopt and publish?
As a next motion.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the next B. Okay, thanks.
So we have a motion and a second. Send your vote, please. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have an additional motion?
Okay, there you go. I move, I move that we waive the third reading and adopt and publish.
I second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please. Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider approval of the second reading of ordinance number 1136, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Dragonwood Urban Renewal Area in the City of Johnston, County of Polk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Johnston, County of Polk, Johnston Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for the payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Dragonwood Urban Renewal Area. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, this is the second of three meetings, readings required to consider the tip ordinance in our new, newly, new Dragonwood Urban Renewal Area. We did have a question from a council member just prior to this evening, asking for a map of the area. I did upload that this evening. Cindy, if you could just click on the. The proposed tax increment financing area does overlay perfectly the urban renewal area, so it is complete coverage of the urban renewal area. No additional, no comments were received from the public and no proposed changes. Happy to answer any questions.
Those have any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1136?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please. Councilmember, ready?
If.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
If.
Motion passed. City administrator comments?
I don't have any comments, but I believe there's some staff comments this evening.
Okay, Matt, make it quick.
Okay, I just wanted to, to let the council know, we did hold the East of Merle Hay Neighborhood Meeting that was for north of 62nd. We did have about 40 or five residents in attendance, and we still have a small contingent of residents that oppose redevelopment, really around Coburn Beaver Drive area. They're really in the second group, so we're going to move forward here in about two months with our first meeting for the first project, which is Northwest 63rd Avenue. What we, what we told those residents is that when it comes time for Group Two, we would have another meeting at that point in time and see if there was still opposition to that, if that's, if there still is opposition, we have plenty of projects within the city to do that we would move on and do other projects, so. Otherwise, we, we had good attendance, good questions. We also held on April 1st, the North Glen Johnston Common Sidewalk Meeting. We had about 20 in attendance for that. This was really just to let them know that we're going to be out marking sidewalks. We'll have another meeting in a couple of months before we send out notices.
And what part of Johnston is that?
Johnston Common, so just north of the library and in the North Glen neighborhood.
So this is segment three?
Yep, segment three, that we're just getting, getting, really getting started on. 178th Avenue Construction Kickoff Meeting is tomorrow night. You should have an invite on your calendar for that. The presentation won't be much different from the last one, just really kind of letting the folks know that the contractor has started work, what their timeline is, that, that sort of kickoff meeting. Green Meadows West Sidewalk, we'll have a construction kickoff meeting scheduled for April 22nd. At our last council meeting, we did approve that contract, and like I said, roughly the price per four-by-four square, four inches thick is about $143, $147, and invites were set out for that meeting too. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other staff comments? City council comments? Councilman Evans?
Nothing, thanks.
Ready?
I pass.
Cope?
I did have a chance to participate in the DART process that they had. They, I think they had one on Wednesday, one on Thursday, I did have an opportunity. I appreciated their, the thoughtfulness that they had going into that, and I think it presents this with some interesting items to consider. So, and I also enjoyed the opportunity to meet with the consultant on public art, which I thought was also, was very interesting and some, provided some interesting thoughtful items too. You know, both of these are items that are, think people like, but clearly, given the direction that's happening outside of our city, that leaves us with less and less resources potentially to spend on those items, that's a real challenge. We're just going to have to be, just similar to some of the conversation we had tonight about, you know, streetscaping. I mean, the, the funding is going to become a real challenge, not just that item, but other items too. And I think we're going to have to be really diligent about those types of services, so.
Councilman Burkhardt?
Councilmember Evans talked about it stinks to go last. I'll just be honest, it stinks to go after Councilmember Cope, because he just takes all your comments, but at the same point, ditto, it makes it easier and faster. The only other comment I'd make is just wanting to point out the irony that we celebrate and recognize Arbor Day and our recognition of trees, and then we talk about utilizing some of them in a different form as books for Library Week, but I, I'm grateful for both, and I know we all are, so continue to use them and love them and hug them whenever you can. That I yield.
Mayor, I just wanted to recommend to Councilman Evans, I already recommended Councilman Burkhardt, that I had a very nice conversation with Susan Sims, who's a representation, representative of the Mormon Church, and talked to me about the temple and how they were gonna, you know, how it works a little bit in terms of the site and what to expect, and it was really a great conversation. I highly recommend you try and find some time to meet with her and have that discussion because it cuts through a lot of layers and quickly. That's all.
Maybe just to follow up on, I, I know that Councilman Burkhardt also attended the DART presentation, the second night that it was, that it was provided. I think we're going to have DART staff at our next council meeting?
They will be at our next council meeting, they'll actually be at the end of the council meeting, but that's the plan right now, yes.
We can't bring them into the work session?
They have another commitment during the workshop, I think they're in Montmoreland, so, yep.
So they'll, that'll be another opportunity to present the information, and then they're hoping to get some discussion and some feedback from us on what's being proposed, so. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me. I serve on the DART board and I'm pretty familiar with what they're proposing and the challenges that it presents for us, so happy to have those conversations.
Is there any opportunity to get some further detail on what Grimes is doing for their alternative solution? I, I've only read about it through media, as far as that they contracted for some transit, just to add to our conversation.
Yeah, we can reach out to Grimes. I mean, HERDA is a public transit, I believe they're in every county but Polk around us, and so it's just an alternative option that they've, they saw. Yep, I know, so I'll reach out to Grimes and get some information.
Anything else to come before the council? I guess we have a closed session, but anything else before we go into a closed session? None? Then, next item on the agenda is closed session per Iowa Code Section 21.51J. To discuss the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property. The minutes and tape recording of a session, session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Still moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please. Councilmember Cope?
Here, yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.